...of your city council. I am going to call this meeting to order. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone of you for being here. We have a special guest in our audience. We have Commissioner Mary Ann Dunn. We'd like to recognize you. Thank you for being here. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, next up will be roll call. So you can start voting, please. Holly?
All councilors present, an quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up is the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
There is not.
If Don Mayor, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. So far, I don't have any comments at this point in time. So we'll move on to ceremonial items. And first up, we have the oath of office for our new city clerk, Holly Martinez, and that will be administered by our attorney, Mr. Swishow.
Ms. Martinez, if you'll raise your right hand, do you, subject to the penalties of perjury, always swear that you will faithfully perform the duties of the position of city clerk in the city of Alamosa, Colorado, in accordance with the laws of the United States and of the state of Colorado, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Alamosa? You're good. That's enough.
Very good. Very good. Just wait a second. Very good. Very good. Very nice. Congratulations, Holly. Counsel, do we have any comments? Counselor Grego?
I'll start. Welcome, Holly. You've come a long trail and hopefully be with us for a long time. So we know that you can do the job.
Counselor Coleman?
Congratulations. I wish you much success, and you're going to do a great job. So we're looking forward to working many years with you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Holly. You're going to do terrific. I know you will. A nice touch to Marcus with the roses. Good job, buddy.
Thank you, Holly. You know, we're looking forward to a great relationship with you, and I'm sure it's going to be just that. Congratulations again, and we look forward to many years. Next up, we have Roy Sanchez, Water Operator of the Year Award. Is that you, Ms. Heather?
It's Pat.
It's Pat. Sorry, Pat. Didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Good evening, counsel. One thing that I really enjoy about my job is that almost daily I have an occasion to tell people that I get to work with some of the best people in the world and that the city is lucky to have some of the best team members they could possibly have. Occasionally, as we have been recently, we're reminded of this in more tangible terms by events or recognition when someone consistently goes that extra mile and proves with their work ethic, dedication to service, and technical expertise that they truly are at the top of their field. And with that, I'll introduce Farin Hall, our utility superintendent, so he can talk to you a little bit about Roy Sanchez and the award he received.
Welcome, Mr. Hall.
First, I'd like to thank the council for setting aside the time for me to recognize a member of my staff. It's always good, you know, you can have a coworker give you a compliment. That's always good. A supervisor can give you praise. That's always gratifying. But when you get recognized by your peers and you get recognized by the instructors of your profession, I think that really speaks volume on Roy's professionalism and his character. And recently, at Colorado Wool Water Annual Conference, he was recognized at that time. That's not a real small feat when you consider that 94 percent of all the water systems in the state of Colorado are rural waters. So I think it's a really contributing factor as to his dedication to his work for the city and the way he approaches it. And I really felt that the council needed to be aware of what he has accomplished. So that's why I asked for this time. I actually made him give me his plaque that they had already gave him and told him that I wouldn't give it back to him until he was able to receive it in front of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I don't got much to say. Do I need to get sworn in? Okay. I just want to make sure I don't need to say anything. Thank you all for coming and for coming out tonight.
Mr. Sanchez, congratulations, counsel. Do we have any comments? Counselor Johnson?
Roy, we're lucky to have you. I'm glad you're a part of our team. Congratulations on the award. It's well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Grego?
I've had the opportunity to see Roy grow in this, with the city, and as he climbs up and up. And what I like is the unity of Public Works. Look at all the people from Public Works that showed up tonight. That tells you, you know, the familia, how they follow you and grateful for all this.
Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
I've had the opportunity to know Roy for a few years now, and Roy, being recognized by your peers, that's probably one of the greatest accomplishments that a person could achieve in what you've done. So I would just like to express many thanks for your service and your hard work and the dedication that you put into your job, making this city different and better for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gillespie?
Congratulations, Roy. I remember when you first came to council, your first appearance. It seems like a long time ago, but it seems very recent also. You've moved up quickly, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
Congratulations, Roy. It's really a challenge that you put up with, and you made it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Roy, I'll just...
Like I shake hands now? Shake your own hand?
Absolutely. We're here at your... You know, Roy, when that new water plant first came online, a lot of us were very apprehensive about how we got there. But it's because of people like you that take on a challenge firsthand that makes your department and you yourself such a great asset to our city. We applaud you. We thank you, and we know that every day you go to work, you do the best you can. And obviously, that is one of those things that your peers recognize about you. And for you to receive that award at the state level says tons about your ability and your dedication to all of us.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
All right.
Next up, we have Police Week proclamation. And I will read this proclamation, and then I have asked Counselor Stefano to present it to our police department.
Before you...
Chief, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can Jamie Coulson, Officer Coulson, has kind of spearheaded this whole thing. He's put together the ceremony that we're going to have, and he's coordinated the multi-agency honor guard that we're going to have during the ceremony. And as a representation of that, Sheriff Jackson's in the room to show the partnership and how strong it's growing. But if you could, let Officer Coulson kind of tell you what Police Week is before you read that, so you know a little bit about the events and how we honor the fallen officers across the country.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for being here, Officer Coulson.
Thank you.
I want to say something about Officer Coulson.
Great.
His kids and my kids grew up together. I was just telling Counselor Stefano that you guys used to play baseball till it was so dark you couldn't see the ball anymore. But you're back in Alamosa, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. Today, in the United States, some 900,000 law enforcement officers put their lives on the line for the safety and protection of others. They serve with valor, distinction, and with great success. That protection, however, comes at a price. Each year, there are approximately 60,000 assaults on law enforcement officers, resulting in nearly 16,000 injuries. Sadly, over the last decade, an average of 150 officers a year have been killed in the line of duty. Just lost my spot. On average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 58 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 20,000 U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. There have been 13 law enforcement officers in the San Luis Valley killed in the line of duty. During the week of May 15, law enforcement officers from across the country honor those fallen officers by having ceremonies and events. The Alamosa Police Department is partnering with the Colorado State Patrol, Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, the Adams State University Police, and the Alamosa and Montavista Fire Departments, and will be having such a ceremony on May 13, 2015. There will be a procession of police vehicles from the Colorado State Patrol Office to the Alamosa Police Department beginning at 4:30, and the ceremony will begin in front of our Public Safety Building shortly thereafter. All public is invited, and I would like to personally invite all city council members and city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And with that, I will read this proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of law enforcement and the Alamosa Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Alamosa, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the City of Alamosa Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, and whereas I, City of Alamosa Mayor Joseph Lucero, call upon all citizens of Alamosa and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10, 2015 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Alamosa to observe Friday, May 15, 2015 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. Now, therefore, I, Joseph Lucero, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alamosa and on behalf of your Alamosa City Council, do hereby honor law enforcement officers across the country and the Alamosa Police Department and proudly proclaim the week of May 10, 2015 Police Week and May 15, 2015 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And I will sign this, and Counselor Stefano will present it.
Mayor, one comment I'd like to make is make sure that we recognize our Alamosa County Sheriff, Robert Jackson, and welcome him back to the city.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Absolutely. We have a lot to be proud of, and Officer Jackson was here for 25 years. Thank you for being here, Robert. We have another proclamation this evening, and this proclamation is Mental Health Month proclamation. And we have Christina Daniel here. Christina, thanks for being here.
Thank you, and thank you, city council. You actually declare Mental Health Month every year, so we really appreciate that. We wanted just to bring to light that mental health issues affect so many of us and so many of our population. We appreciate the support we're receiving from the City of Alamosa, as well as all you have done to make sure people know about our services and accessing our services. I do have handouts for each of you today that I'll just share with the staff so that maybe you could put them up in your offices or share them with your team members and your community members as well. And we have some other new services for our crisis services that are outlined in here about how people can access those services. We have a house in town in the City of Alamosa where people can come to de-escalate also if they're suicidal or need to learn new skills. There's a comfortable place for them to go, and that's new this year with some state funding, and that will be explained in the packets that I leave for you. So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you, Christina. And so with that, I will read this proclamation, and I have asked Counselor V. Hill to present this to you. Mental Health Month 2015. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Mental Health Month in the City of Alamosa. As the mayor, on behalf of your Alamosa City Council, I also call upon the community, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Alamosa, Colorado, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions as soon as needed as we do other physical health concerns before they reach a mental health crisis. I will sign this.
Thank you, sir.
Christina, I would like to let you know that I see the work that your staff does in the community, and you have a very competent and professional staff. And I just want you to know that the citizens and the community appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that you all put into the service that you provide. So keep up the wonderful work. You touch so many people throughout the San Luis Valley, and I just can't tell you how much the community really appreciate the work that you do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. 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 Keep close, guys. [laughter] Thank you. Thank you. I love them. [inaudible]
The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have six consent calendar items. We have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for April 15, 2015. Award of bid, 2015 Slurry Seal and Micro Surface Program. Award of bid, 2015 Water Department Back Hole. Award of bid, 2015 Sunset Drainage Project. Award of bid, 2015 Street Department Wheel Loader. And Award of bids for Carol SID. Counsel, do we have any questions, comments on Consent Calendar A?
Mayor, I have a comment, just to point out the fact that we're starting to do a lot of our street work, and now we're starting to bid a lot of stuff out. So it's important to tell the people out there that we're starting to do a lot of street work and stuff, so...
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no other questions, I move we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have regular business. We have presentations from outside agencies, and tonight we have our Chamber of Commerce Chairperson, Mr. Randy Wright. Thank you for being here, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, sir. We're celebrating a little bit, I guess, it's a kind of celebration. I brought the bottles to celebrate.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We certainly appreciate that.
They've been empty for quite a while, but I thought I'd bring them to you for a little bit of showing off tonight.
Oh, my goodness. Let's put those up there. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Alamosa. Snickerbox.
Oh, my goodness. Look at them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me tonight. It is a night of celebration, to some extent. We're not quite done yet, but we have reached a huge milestone, as you've all seen, and I had intended to be maybe another step or two further before I came by, but as things draw out, I thought I should probably come and present where we are and what's gone on so far. As you can see, we found a few treasures as we went through the project. We didn't find the gold bags that were supposedly in the walls that Carol Redding said that her grandpa had left there. We looked, and all of the workers who worked on the project were still there at the end of the project, so they didn't disappear with the bag that they'd found during the project. So I don't think they turned up. But we were able to conclude the demolition part, at least, of the Pink Elephant Project. And I know you've all been by there, and you've all probably got stories of your own and stories that people have told you about how much nicer it looks over there and how much more inviting it is, looking, you know, in that corner and coming out from the depot building and looking across the street to see, actually be able to see downtown. And we've got a few things that we can show you with that. So basically, as we've been through this, and most of you have been through this a few times, but the Pink Elephant Project was designed to prime the pump of Alamosa Downtown redevelopment. And so as we look at this, we've got 40,000 new visitors every year, and these are new visitors to Alamosa, new faces that walk out of the depot every year. They may be visitors to the Welcome Center or on the train or people that are coming in... on the Pink Elephant site. Slavic's Bar before it was Beef's, a little better picture of it. Everything used to happen on State Avenue. This is Bronco busting on State Avenue. They just basically closed the street off and had Bronco busting right there in the middle of the street. All the parades and everything happened right there on State Avenue as well. This is the only picture that I have of the Pink Elephant. You've got to look close to see the sign there on the side of the building. It says Pink Elephant. This was in 1989. So pre-demolition, this is what we had to look for or look at as we drove by the site. Go ahead and scroll through those a little bit from different locations. So demolition began on Thursday, February 26th after a lot of heartache and headaches, but we were able to finally get things going on Thursday, February 26th. And we started with Sick and Twisted, Guatemex, and the old Sick and Twisted, the gold yellow brick building that was on State Avenue. Those buildings were smaller, easier to demolish and we could use those as piles and so on to walk on to knock the bigger building down, as well as there was no asbestos in those buildings, so they could be removed without the added requirements of removing asbestos. So this is starting into the Sick and Twisted building. We had discussions early on and I know council was involved in a lot of those discussions about whether we needed to actually buy that building or if we could work around it at times. We know that we had some challenges making a deal with Flint to buy that building and we thought possibly we could knock the other buildings around. But, go ahead, Heather. If you watch and you can go ahead and scroll through, there you go. You can see that that building was made out of adobe. It was adobe walls. And as we started knocking that down, there is no way that we ever could have saved that building and knocked the other buildings down around it, so I'm very thankful that we were able to go ahead and purchase that building and knock it down as well. Go ahead. We found some other treasures. This was on the back of the Tree Heels on Tap Building and it's kind of an interesting question. It's not really a story. We don't have the answer for it. Beef and the owner of the, I'm sorry, the Tree Heels on Tap Building, Beef and the owners of the Tree Heels on Tap Building in those days weren't necessarily the best of friends. They were competitors. And how that sign got to be on the back of his building, we don't know, but I'm sure there's a good story there if we could find out. The snow was nice. It settled some of the dust and helped us a lot through the project. There wasn't enough of it. There hadn't been near enough of it all winter, but we're hoping for more of that and it was good. We did have to go ahead and add some water for that. So demolition of the actual Pink Elephant began on Sunday, May 4, or March 1st. It was on purpose that it was done on Sunday morning. The Colorado Department of Transportation actually required that, lower traffic counts so that we didn't have to worry about so much challenges with detours and those kinds of things and too many people around and all that, those issues. So we started demolishing at nine o'clock with the backside of the building. We had three track hoes working, so you can go ahead and scroll through those, Heather. Spraying water on it the whole time and now you can start to see that we've got three track hoes working simultaneous on this. This is three different companies and these guys don't always work together. They're competitors as well, but they were friendly throughout, some of them were than others, but this event that morning was absolutely orchestrated. If you watched, it was just like a symphony watching those three hoes work together. They were working very close and they never had any challenges. Now, if you see the one on the right there, that's Adrian Absmire. And we were very concerned about the street light that morning because that's a very expensive place to damage. We were extremely worried about those walls falling out and damaging the street light and we really didn't know exactly how to handle keeping that from happening. So we came up Saturday morning, we came up with the idea that we would walk that track hoe out on the street on tires and Adrian would hold that wall up while James Cooley tore the building down from within and tried to make sure that we kept it away from that street light. Go ahead and walk it on down that wall. You can see how he's holding it up there and how close it was to that street light. So as we got about to right here, I was over on the depot parking lot and that south-facing wall started to fall out and I had to turn and walk away because I couldn't even watch it. I was pretty sure that the street light was gone at that point. Mike Wisdom was calling me on the phone and I was ignoring it from upstairs in the depot and he was wanting to let me know what I already knew, but as I turned back, I watched that wall as it started to go out, came back in and fell inside just like it was designed. So we had very little challenge. Some of the construction debris fell on what was a base of a street light. I had some guys show up that morning and take a street light down and got it out of the way. Otherwise, this is just a regular street lamp kind of thing. They took that down that morning and it wasn't damaged, but the base was damaged and it's still not replaced. We've still got to get that done, but that's the only significant damage that was done that morning and the rest of the building was knocked down. Go ahead. So Pink Elephant burritos. We had to wrap all of the non-fryable asbestos-laden material in plastic and it had to be double-wrapped in plastic and taped extra. It was a challenge, to say the least, and the contractors weren't happy that they had to do it, but it had to be done as per CDPE. And this is kind of how it went. Go ahead, there's a couple of pictures there. Shows how that all worked out. Now, I've been told by the contractors that it's very rare that those burritos actually stay together, that when they dump them out, they usually fall apart, which makes it kind of ridiculous that they have to do that, but ours stayed together pretty well. We were lucky. We got some really good material from Alamosa Building Supply. Hoyt was a very good partner in this project. He gave us all of that material at his cost and it was a definite savings, especially considering when we got to this point, we didn't have any money left in the budget to make those purchases there. So on March 3rd, the demolition began on Tree Heels on Tap. Now, the reason that we had to do it separately was that the abatement was actually done for the asbestos on that building separately as well. Early on, we got some money from Colorado Brownfields that was closing out their account and the money that we got from them exactly paid for the abatement on Tree Heels on Tap, but it was done by a different company. And so as we went for the demolition permits, there was a few holdups from getting some information from that other company, so it took us an extra couple of days. Honestly, it didn't work out too badly because when we got ready to need to demolish that, those demolition permits came in and we were able to start without a delay. So we started knocking that building down. This one was probably the best of all the buildings on that corner as far as structurally was concerned. It took a lot more work to go ahead and knock it down. You can watch a few pictures as he pulled the roof off of that, almost all in one piece. If you look at that picture there, you can see upstairs, there's a restroom there in one of the bedrooms. There was two bedrooms upstairs in the back of that, each with a restroom in it. I'll let you draw your own conclusions as to what that was for. But I like this picture because it showed the water tower right underneath the arm of that track hoe, so I thought it was an interesting picture for the community. About right here, you can see that power pole there. We left that power pole up on purpose because we thought it would help us stabilize that wall and of course, with Adrian walking down the wall, just like we'd done on the Pink Elephant, we weren't too incredibly worried about it. But just seconds after I took this picture, that wall caved and it knocked that power pole down. That power pole went across, over into the Pocket Park, damaged some bike racks and took the sign out for the Pocket Park. So unfortunately, I did damage the city's property. I'm asking for forgiveness at this point. It's easier to do that than ask permission, so that's where we're at now. But the whole thing fell basically about right then. Go ahead. Demolition was completed and the lot opened on March 9th. That's including all of the debris hauling and everything, so this is a couple of pictures that show what it looked like as soon as we got it done. And then we've got a couple of pictures of before and after. Tried to take the pictures from exactly the same places that the before picture was taken. You can see how much more inviting that is. We don't have anything that's saying "come here," but we at least don't have anything that's saying "don't come here." And I think that's the best one of all. You can see Mount Blanca in the background right there on the corner. So the final development, the plans for final development will include retail-based occupants as we've talked all along. Please do not quote me on this. We will be looking for tourist-oriented retails such as Cold Stone or Cinnabon. We have not talked to either one. I'll tell you that right up front, so we don't know that they're coming. We don't even think they're coming, but that's the kind of thing that we'd like to look for. Maybe a souvenir store with an anchor of a restaurant, although I've had discussions with a developer today, as a matter of fact, that said that financing a building with a restaurant in it might be a little more difficult. They don't like to finance new restaurants. That being said, I also had conversations with another possible local community member who would like to build a restaurant, who might have the clout to make that happen and I think it would be a very good add as an anchor for that final project as we move forward. Again, no promises, but we've got some possibilities moving forward. But the whole idea is that we want to get visitors to cross that street from the depot and head downtown so that they can eat and shop. And then I had to add at the end of that, or a boutique hotel. In other words, there's a lot of ideas out there and we're really not stuck on any of them. If anything works to actually bring the people across the street and beautify our downtown area, we're going to be interested in talking to them about that. So that's basically how it all went. Can you look at that? We also had, Dave Peaslee did a time lapse for us and you've got to watch really close and really quick. It happens pretty fast. Unfortunately, it was a little bit from the wrong angle. If you're watching the windows, you can start to see part of the building disappearing in the back. And then all of a sudden, it fell. We had a lot of hurdles as we went through this project, as a lot of you know, and every time we came to one, we had to just say, "Okay, it's just another step that we've got to take." But as difficult as it was, I think it was well worth it. Any questions?
Any questions, Council? Counselor?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment, though. Thank you for the hard work that everybody put into this, including staff and entire San Luis Valley community, as all of the partners who participated. One thing that I really liked and what I liked about the project is that whenever possible, you try to use local contractors and you also try to use the local businesses and I think that goes a long way with helping sustain our community, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ty. We did try and use local people and some of that was a bit selfish, I have to admit, because local people helped us and it was much easier to get help from the local people. But even when I wasn't able to use local people, I was able to use people that were connected locally. Even our asbestos contractors out of Denver had local connections, so we did our best to try and do that.
Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what Mr. Coleman said. Randy, thank you so much for all your hard work on this, as with the staff and the county and all the other partners. You mentioned all the hurdles that you had to jump through and get over, but I really appreciate your concentration and keep on trying to get this done and it looks really awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Counselor Diego?
Yes, I'd like to echo the same thing and this project was, how long has it been going, Randy? I thought it was about five, six years?
You know, Charlie, I really don't know exactly when it started. I started three and a half years ago and it started before I did. And it started long enough before I did that we had to redo some of the testing and so on when I got started, so you're probably right. It probably is somewhere in the neighborhood of five years.
It's a long time and I had the opportunity, being born and raised here, to see those buildings functional and also working in that area for 30 years when those buildings, from the Victoria, Beef's and all those buildings were, you know, that was the downtown. There was a lot of action there. Sixth Street used to be one of the, was almost like Main Street back in those days.
It sure was.
And so, no, I thank you for all the work and for working with our staff, you know. It so happened we had to bring in a young lady to come and finally get this all completed and this stuff, so.
That is true. There is definitely a lot of truth to that. And I think you brought up one of the challenges that I wasn't counting on, Charlie, and that was the emotional stress at the end. Yourself concluded, a lot of people that I know and people that I met through this project grew up there, either their parents owned buildings or whatever the case was in that building. There was a lot of memories there, a lot of recent memories there and through getting to know those people and working through some of their challenges and helping them with some of those things. Carol Redding, for instance, it was a little bit difficult for Carol, but I took Carol over there before we knocked it down and she put a, she had printed a picture of her dad and her grandpa standing together and she taped it up on the wall there in Beef's and wanted it to be there when it was knocked down and I made sure that it was up there right before we started knocking it down, too, so I knew how important that was to her.
Counselor Stefano?
Randy, thank you for your tenacity. That was a nice one, man, and it's so nice to see it. Even the bare ground is better looking at that building. There's a lot of memories there, I'm sure, bars and whatever it was, a church at one time also that was trying to function there, so great job.
Thank you. And I also have to thank council for making, most of you have been making sure to thank everybody else and it's really easy, me being the point man, to get the thanks and I appreciate it, but it was everybody and if it hadn't been for everybody, we never would have gotten this project done.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. It was everybody. It was a coalition of a good group of partners, but we did need that point man and that was you and you did a terrific job. Lots of criticism, lots of heartache, lots of hurdles along the way and you just withstood it and kept moving forward. Lots of stressful days for us, too. I think everybody shared the stress, all the partners. It was a terrific project. It took a long time, but look at the results. And I'm so happy it came about. There were so many things that could have tripped us up on this project and we just kept moving forward and getting the support that it took to get it done and I appreciate that. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much, Trustee.
Counselor Gillespie?
Thank you, Randy. I agree with what everyone else said. It was a big challenge. I'm amazed at how quickly it was demolished and cleaned up. I thought it might take weeks or months and a matter of, what, two weeks? There was a lot of action there. Sixth Street used to be one of the, was almost like Main Street back in those days.
It sure was.
And so, no, I thank you for all the work and for working with our staff, you know. So happened we had to bring in a young lady to come and finally get this all completed and this stuff, so.
That is true. There is definitely a lot of truth to that. And I think you brought up one of the challenges that I wasn't counting on, Charlie, and that was the emotional stress at the end. Yourself included. A lot of people that I know and people that I met through this project grew up there. Either their parents owned buildings or whatever the case was in that building. There was a lot of memories there, a lot of recent memories there. And through getting to know those people and working through some of their challenges and helping them with some of those things, Carol Redding, for instance, it was a little bit difficult for Carol. But I took Carol over there before we knocked it down and she put a, she had printed a picture off of her dad and her grandpa standing together and she taped it up on the wall there in Beavs and wanted it to be there when it was knocked down. And I made sure that it was up there right before we started knocking it down too, so I knew how important that was to her.
Councilor Stefano?
Randy, thank you for your tenacity. That was a nice one, man, and it's so nice to see it. Even the bare ground is better looking at that building. There's a lot of memories there, I'm sure. Bars and whatever it was, a church at one time also was trying to function there, so great job.
Thank you. And I also have to thank council for making, most of you have been making sure to thank everybody else. It's really easy, me being the point man, to get the thanks and I appreciate it, but it was everybody and if it hadn't been for everybody, we never would have gotten this project done.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. It was everybody. It was a coalition of a good group of partners, but we did need that point man and that was you. And you did a terrific job. Lots of criticism, lots of heartache, lots of hurdles along the way and you just withstood it and kept moving forward. Lots of stressful days for us too. I think everybody shared the stress, all the partners. It was a terrific project. It took a long time, but look at the results. And I'm so happy it came about. There were so many things that could have tripped us up on this project and we just kept moving forward and getting the support that it took to get it done and I appreciate that. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much, trustee.
Councilor Gillespie?
Thank you, Randy. I agree with what everyone else said. It was a big challenge. I'm amazed at how quickly it was demolished and cleaned up. I thought it might take weeks or months and a matter of, what, two weeks it was complete after demolition started. People stopped me all the time saying how much better it looks and I can hardly wait till something's developed on that site, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. We were actually told by some of the contractors that it could take up to six weeks. And I think we just kind of had a meeting of the minds before that happened and I said, "This can't take six weeks. We've got to get this done quicker than that." And they, these guys worked. They really worked hard. I can't tell you how much I appreciate Adrian and James Cooley especially, but also Brian Aloff, everybody that was involved. Rocky Southway had trucks out there, the county had trucks out there. Everybody involved made sure that it happened very quickly.
Randy, I'm the last to speak and, you know, kudos and thanks to all the participants, the county, all the participants, especially our staff, but especially to this council and council that have, were seated here before when this project started for the vision that they had in what is possible. There are a lot of memories. I remember being here during the 60s at the university in about 1970, something like that, maybe in the late 60s, going into Beavs and just had that smell. Bars always have that smell, you know, and when you think about Beavs, you think, I don't know, there's that odor that comes to your mind. It's really kind of strange, you know, cigarette smoking was allowed and beer was all over the place. But anyway, the memories are great and they were something that sustained us. But as council said, now we look forward to what can happen and what may happen there and we applaud all the participants, especially you for all the hard work. You and Heather and everyone else, thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Anything else? Thanks.
And I've got your snooker balls here and...
I looked back through the fire maps and the best I can figure, there was a billiards location there sometime around the turn of the century, around 1900, so I think these go back that far.
Wow.
We looked, actually had people that went over on the lot that I didn't know about and snuck over there with metal detectors. We found a captain's bar, military captain's bar down the tunnel. No points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have business brought forward by city staff, public works. Public hearing ordinance number four, 2015 Tucker Wagner annexation and the county request for fee waiver, plant investment fees for water and sewer taps. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. This is the fourth and final time that you'll see the Tucker Wagner annexation. This will be the public hearing on the final annexation ordinance. As you know, this property is an enclave located between West 7th and West 8th Streets, west of Washington Avenue and directly across West 8th Street from the new elementary school. City water and sewer are currently available and the property is served by paved streets. Access to the south half of the proposed annexation was included in last year's West 8th Street project and curb cuts and drive aprons were added at locations that would meet future development needs as specified by the property owner.
Council, do we have any questions or comments of Pat before I open the public hearing? If not, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number four, 2015, the Tucker Wagner annexation. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this ordinance, please step forward. Mr. McCann? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Having that school out there, kids walking around, you want to try to update as much as you can. It's hard to do. There's not a lot of money here and when you put in curbs, sidewalks, it's going to make things safer. And the one thing you don't want to lose is our kids. And I don't have a problem with the speed limit around the schools being 10 miles an hour. And if they don't like it, just ticket the heck out of them and walk instead of drive your cars.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance number four, 2015? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for discussion or Councilor Diego?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. Trying to get my thing back here. Being born and raised in that area, years ago, that used to be an old penitente. There was a church there, a penitente church in like what they call a morada where they would worship. And then also there was, the person that lived there, and I don't know how you could find this, I don't know if it's their record, they had several burials there. So I don't know if there's a record with the courthouse or, I know when you bury somebody in your private property, I don't know if you have to keep a record of it or what the process was, but I had remembered back in those days that, and then the burial, the burial went further down to where it exists today, the old Spanish cemetery.
That's news to me. We can try to research it. I've...
No, I was just pointing those deals out, you know, and I...
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, what the process was, so. But it is, just like Dan says, to clean up that area and make it look presentable for that, because with time, that whole area, it's going to take off because of the school being there and stuff. And right now, we have some really nice houses in that area that shows that and plus, we're doing work with the West 8th Street and all that. It's kind of like a little puzzle coming together finally, so.
Piece by piece.
Yeah. Thank you, Pat.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annexation that makes sense. It fits right in. There's probably no reason why it wasn't annexed before. If there's no more comments, I'm ready to make a motion. Is there any comments? I'll move that we, the council approve ordinance number four, 2015.
One second.
I've got a motion in a second on ordinance number four, 2015, the Tucker Wagner annexation. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up, we have the county request for fee waiver, plant investment fee for water and sewer taps. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. As you know, Alamosa County has requested a fee waiver for the plant investment fees associated with their new annex building in the People's Place subdivision. In all fairness to the county, new leadership in the department has resulted in some new philosophies regarding these fee waiver requests. As stated in your packet, we have stood in support of previous requests this year as they were made by a governmental and economic partner. And these requests were funded out of the general fund, which is populated by sales tax and paid by all county citizens. This waiver, however, would be funded from the enterprise fund, which is paid only by city ratepayers. So with that, if you have no questions for me, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Dunn to speak on behalf of the county.
Thank you, Pat. Commissioner Dunn? Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Holly, congratulations. Mr. Attorney and Heather, Heather did a fantastic job with, working with Randy. You all know that and you've mentioned it a number of times, but I really would like to thank her in a special way. Well, you know why I'm here. First of all, I wanted, I had it down in my notes here. I really wanted to thank the county, the city, for all the different ways the city and the county work together. And what I appreciate probably the very most at this time is the police department and the sheriff's department. They have really worked in a wonderful way and then you include the campus and the state patrol. It is, it's really going to make a difference in our community. It already has made a difference. And I really appreciate you gentlemen all, you know, supporting that 110%. So tonight, I'm here before you to ask for a waiver on the tap fee. The tap fee is $6,555 and it's to connect the administration, the new building, the administration annex with the city sewage and water. This building provides, first of all, when you come into the city of Alamosa now from the south, it's going to look beautiful. We're beginning to work on the landscaping and it's just a wonderful welcome to the city from the southern end. And the reason why we had to be annexed into the city is because of the estate law that says the offices of the county clerk, treasurer and the assessor's office all have to be within the county seat, the city that is the county seat. So that's why initially the county had to do that. So it's another one of those mandates that come on top, but it's a mandate that makes sense. Those offices should be within the city. The other thing I'd like to bring out is that the number of people that are using those facilities are exactly the same number as used them when we were on Edison and Fourth Street. And so it won't increase or be a burden on our sewage or water system in any way because it's the same, same number of people. The one thing it has done though is, but you can't tell it when you're downtown and looking for a parking space, is it should have freed up a few parking spaces, but you can't find them anyway. So I just wanted to bring out, it was interesting that Randy was here. I didn't know he was going to be here. I should have checked the agenda in the newspaper. But this is exactly, the cost of this is almost exactly what the county, exactly one half of what the county put in in kind services for the Pink Elephant. You know, the county had its trucks and its people and its expertise there and the county made 48 trips between the Pink Elephant and the landfill. And, you know, that was a pretty expensive ordeal for us, but one that we're real proud of every time I drive by there. I'm delighted to see it. The other thing is, I'm a member of the city of Alamosa and all of us are also members of the county. We're citizens of the same, of the same community. And so it doesn't bother me that, you know, that I'm picking up, that my little house there on First Street is helping to pay for that tap. In fact, 59%, according to the study that Hugh Hallett gave us for the studies, 59% of Alamosa's population, of the county's population, lives in the city of Alamosa. And another 1% of that population lives in East Alamosa. So together, that's 60% of the population of the county is in suburban, if you want to call it, suburban Alamosa. And somebody mentioned the sales tax already today and that's 60% is what the city gets for the sales taxes. So I thought that was kind of an interesting little statistic to throw around. The other is, just to kind of let you know, a little reminder, I'm going to do a little plug for the county. The county supports 250 full-time employees. All of us, as well as 80 people right now who are being housed in the county jail. We support the treasurer and the clerk and the recorder and the assessor, all of who help finance the city by the work that they do. And as well as, of course, we have our land use there and the Bets offices in that building. That's the only additional person, is Frank Muniz that wasn't. Frank didn't fit in the other building. We had him out with us, but now he's over in the city building, but I don't think he uses that much utilities. So the county also provides for us an incredible environment with 690 miles of roads. That's a lot of roads to maintain. And of course, we have the Department of Human Services, public health and the safety of the sheriff's office. So, and all of those departments serve the city, the people of the city of Alamosa, not just people in the county and the other part of the county, the other 40% of the county. Therefore, to let all of this come to a beautiful end, I humbly ask you on behalf of the other two county commissioners and myself to waiver that fee for us. It's the same people paying for the same thing and we really appreciate it. Cash flow, as you know, you're in the business of, is a problem. And at this time, we had to take a large amount of money out of our building fund and put it into the airport because the grants for the airport haven't come in yet. So the county has had to take $450,000 out of its savings and put into the airport. When the grants come through, that money will be put back. But $6,555 is nothing to sneeze about. It's money to help pay salaries, it's to help us fulfill our jobs. And so on behalf of the citizens of Alamosa County, I ask you to do us the favor and consider a waiver for this fee, this tap fee. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions of Commissioner Dunn?
You can ask me anything about the county and if I don't know it, I'll say, "I refuse to answer on the grounds of they incriminate me."
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Dunn, I don't particularly have a question of you. I do have a comment though. At the start of your talking to us...
Certainly.
You missed, you mentioned the collaboration we have and I do believe you're right. The police, the sheriff's department, ASU, that's a great collaboration. I think they're working well together. I do think there's room for more improvement in most of the other areas and I think we just need to start working together like those department, departments have. I think there's tremendous amount of savings to the city and the county for our taxpayers if we start working together a little better in some of the other areas.
Correct.
I just encourage you to continue working together with the city and the city working together with the county to realize those savings for our citizens.
I appreciate that. In fact, Mr. Steenburgh has before us, he presented today, or it was presented today, an MOU regarding new construction out there and the allowance of water or something and the county, of course, is more than willing to cooperate with that. It'd be some of the affluence would go onto county land and there's no problem there. So I mean, like, the number of meetings that Heather attends with the county, the work that you've put in for the justice centers and the need, the need for that, the creative imagination that we're going to need to work together to use the historic, beautiful courthouse together, those are all things that we really need to really work together. Economic development is another one. The unmanned aircraft programs, we're all working together with that. The, our two lawyers, I think, work together. They're not always at odds. I think they're pretty good friends and they work together. I think they're, they're pretty good friends and they work together. And Charlie's on the, uh, airport board, which we appreciate. You know, there's, there's ways we can do better. Like I think, um, probably zoning. I think we should sit down and probably work on, like I've been invited to be on the city planning thing. I think there's ways that we can work on zoning and, uh, economic development together and as well as housing. And I live in Alamoosa, the city. So, uh, you know, I, I hear you.
Thank you. Counselor Diego.
Kind of echo what Rusty says as far as working together and, and then what Pat says, the new leadership that's there with the new commissioners, you know? Because in the past, me being here the longest, we've had some different leadership there that, and the working relationship really wasn't there, but today it's there. And I, I think we need to work together, you know? There's, there's a lot of stuff that the, that the city needs for the county to participate and to hop out, you know? And, and vice versa, you know, us hopping back and forth because just like you said, it comes out of the same pocket of those people that we represented. And you represent pretty much the same people that we represent. So it's so important, you know, in the future, whatever issues come up, whatever projects come up, I think it's, it's so, so important that we come together and work for, for the taxpayer, you know? Cause there, just like Rusty said, there is a lot of duplication out there that, and now that we have the right leadership in place, I think we should be able to say, hey, you know, let's, let's look at this and let's look at that and let's save the taxpayer some money instead of just you do your own thing and we do our own thing. I don't think that's right. And I remember back when Governor Romer here wanted to put everybody together, you know? But I think there's room there where we can work together. And I think, uh, there's going to be stuff out there that we're going to come to the county and say, we need your help.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and like I said, with, with the leadership there now, I think we're going to be able to communicate that and, and get that done. And, and we appreciate you, you coming here tonight and, and like you said, it comes out of the same pocket that we're talking about, so.
We're the same family. It's, those are little family feuds that shouldn't happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
But they do.
Counselor Stefano.
Ms. Dunn, I, I really appreciate you and, uh, we're really two entities, um, you know, with one same common bond and that's to serve the citizens of Alamoosa. And I think it'd be great if we could unite and, and help each other out in any area that arises that we can work with each other. I, I know the county is doing a great job on a lot of things and, um, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can as a city of Alamoosa. So I think we need to work together and, um, create that bond.
I do too. Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Dunn, uh, we definitely have a symbiotic relationship. I mean, it's just one of those things where, you know, one hand washes the other.
Sure.
And, um, we want to make sure that, uh, we can be of service to the county and, and we hope you feel the same way about us. Um, in other words, uh, if there are opportunities that can be had where we can help one another, we should, uh, take that, uh, step and, and make sure that we make life easier for our citizens in general. And so, um, I, uh, I will, uh, submit.
I have a question for Pat.
I will submit to the counselors and for their discussion, questions, concerns. Counselor Coleman.
Yes, um, I have a question for you, Pat, and thank you so much, um, Ms. Dunn, for coming out here. We really appreciate all the work you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pat, and the waiving of the fees, um, it impacts our, um, enterprise fund. And I'm just curious, have we had the waiving? How much have we waived in fees in the past, say, year for the county?
Uh, immediately what comes to mind is, I believe it was $7,500 for building permit fees at the airport. Uh, and that included $950, I believe, for tap fees, water sewer tap fees at the airport. We also waived, uh, it was very minor, like a hundred dollars, I believe, for a subdivision application fee.
Okay.
That's been in the last year.
So if we move forward with allowing, um, a waiver of these fees as we're looking at close to a little bit over $14,000 within the past 12 months?
Yes, sir.
For the county?
Yes, sir.
If I could speak, the airport, although the county is responsible ultimately for, for the finances, if, if the airport, uh, board of control cannot control it. But really it, the, the airport is not the county's. It's at, um, there is an airport board of control that, um, should pay the fees, but the, the legal thing is kind of mixed up and the county is, is the one that pays it. You know, it's paid with our checkbook. But it really is the airport, uh, board of control that asked for that. And, uh, Charlie, you can speak to that.
And we do still have an intergovernmental agreement out there for both the airport and the library. So even though it's still, even though the county runs it and operates it, it's still part of the city. So, uh, sure, and I appreciate you sharing the, the, the amount because there, there has been even in the past, the past year where we have worked together where the, the, the city has and, and their other buildings have waived other amounts and stuff. So it, it doesn't stop at 14,000. I think if you really total it up, it totals up a lot, larger number. But, uh, it, like with the airport, it is a part city and it is part county also and that's all.
Counselor Coleman.
So we're looking at a little bit over $14,000 that we will be waiving for the county uh, over this past, uh, 12 months if we move forward with this, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And what has the history been in the past as far as waiving fees for the county?
You've, you've been, as I understand it, you've been pretty lenient. We, we, uh, most of the, most of the fee waivers have been from general fund. It's common for us, our water tap fees are split up into two sections. One is water tap and one is a planned investment fee. The water tap, uh, for the new county building was waived because their, their, the water tap portion of that charge was waived because their contractor did the water tap. So we, we commonly, we commonly waive that. The, uh, the planned investment fees, in all honesty, I'm not sure if they've been waived in the past or not.
Okay. And my last question is, let's say we decide to move forward and waive the fees and we're looking at a little bit over $14,000 in the past 12 months. How does that impact other city, uh, services with those funds? Are we cutting back? Are we not able to move forward on other projects when we do things like this? Or how does that affect overall city?
The $7,500 for the airport came out of the, that was a, that was a general fund expense. So it's, you know, it's, it's paid by not only Alamoosa residents, but Alamoosa County residents, valley residents. And according to the numbers, I've seen a very large portion of our, of our sales taxes paid by non-residents as they come through. The only reason that I, and I supported those fee waivers, the only reason that I recommended this like I did is because coming out of the enterprise fund that's paid for only by the city ratepayers, we have a lot of costs. We've been replacing membranes at the water treatment plant. We, we've got some significant expenses coming up at the wastewater treatment plant. So, you know, we're, we're, every penny counts. It all goes somewhere.
And I think something that Pat and I talked about is that, you know, when you get new leadership in regards to myself and, and Pat and Public Works, it's philosophically not just necessarily doing it for, that's because how we've always done it. And so, you know, from a, from a staff perspective, this won't prevent us from, from accomplishing any projects or, or providing the same level of service. It's just more of a, let's just do a quick gut check. Is this the same, um, kind of philosophy we want to continue forward with? And, and if so, we can easily do that. And it's just a, a question in time essentially. But as Pat explains it, the difference between the general fund and the enterprise and, and how those funds are collected, it's, um, it, when you, when you're a local government, and I know the county faces this too, a lot of times it can seem easy to do the in-kind. Um, but it's just making sure we keep track of, of what those are and, and where the dollars are coming from.
Right.
And thank you. And the reason I was asking that because whenever, as a council member, whenever we're trying to, um, I guess, do something opposite of what staff is recommending, I, I like to hear all sides of it because we trust in you and in your judgment, uh, to give us direction. So I, with that being said, I think it's very important, Ms. Dunn, that other commissioners know how important it is for all of us to work together as a team and maybe look at ways to work together in utilizing different services, equipment and anything that we can use to help the overall, uh, county as a whole and the city. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pat, I've got a question of you. In the event, uh, that the, um, justice center becomes a reality, obviously they're going to need water and sewer taps out there. That's going to definitely affect our, uh, planned investment fee because we are going to have a lot of people out there. Granted, they are probably going to be the same people that will utilize this area and that are at this point in time. And so obviously that, that is going to be something that, uh, I don't know who's, is that going to be the county that's probably going to be coming in here for a waiver of that of some sort? We don't really know.
No, according, according to law, the county is responsible for maintaining, um, the courthouse. So it would be again, the county. It's, the courthouse is a county building. And we're mandated to provide a safe and adequate, um, location for the carrying on of justice in our community. And, um, therefore, one way or another, we have to, uh, provide that.
I think, I think that's the, that's the overall objective of any government in any county or any city. I totally respect that. Uh, just a, just a question as to, uh, as to how that would work out.
Mayor, if I could, if I could jump in as a reminder as well, I believe when the county, um, submitted their annexation paperwork for this entire property at that time had requested, um, somewhat of just a blanket waiver. And the council discussion at that time was to just, um, receive those requests on a case by case basis. So, um, anytime there is development out there, whether it be the justice center or any other type, um, the, the county is, is a part of, they would be approaching the city to, to make that request.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion on the county's request.
I, just a, uh, comment and then a, a motion. I too like, uh, Councilman Coleman, really respect the, the work that the staff puts together so we realize where these monies are, are going to and where they're need, and the different types of pots of monies. And, and I know that, uh, a waiver of this amount will have some effect. Am I shorting out here? Will have some effect on, on our, uh, enterprise, uh, fund. So with that, I, I, I would go ahead and make a motion that we waive the, uh, the fees for the planned investment fees for, for water and sewer taps.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Providing for the payment of the bonds and the interest therein, establishing certain accounts for the proceeds of such bonds, authorizing other actions necessary or appropriate in connection therewith and the repealing action theretofore taken in conflict therewith. Heather?
And it appears we may have the sound back on if you want to, when you're speaking. Moving forward, you might want to press your, press a button. The first item before you is the ordinance in regards to the, um, personnel pay. Um, as council knows annually, when you review the budget, it includes an ordinance that sets out the pay ranges for the different positions. This past year, we've embarked on a process to, um, first, update our job descriptions, make sure they're accurate. That provides, um, a very clear understanding what the organization can expect from employees and what employees can expect from an organization. So we wanted to make sure those were updated and, and accurate. We then used those to contract with an agency to do a market survey for our positions. And we have, um, very preliminary information back on that. In regards to that information, there is one position that, um, was identified where the starting pay would actually be higher than the ending pay right now. I, as the city manager, am not authorized to hire someone outside those ranges that's adopted within the ordinance through the budget process. So unfortunately, um, my, my preference would be to bring the entire results from the market survey to council and not be picking out specific positions. That's a little uncomfortable, I think, for employees. And, um, it's more of what the bigger picture is from a market survey perspective. But in order to fill the vacancy that has been created with the resignation of Ms. Romero, I think there could be a difference in the type of applicants we would receive, um, between the two starting pays. So this is simply just to, um, match what the market survey showed for this position and allow me to hire, um, probably at the minimum, the starting pay for that position.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments on ordinance number five dash 2015? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, when can we expect the rest of the market analysis to be complete and take effect for the rest of the employees?
It's taken a, a little bit longer in that we've wanted to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples. We didn't want them just going off of titles. For example, a maintenance, um, worker one in one community might have different requirements than a maintenance worker one in a different community. So when we, um, saw some results that maybe had a difference, and this would be actually an example of this, it came back pretty different than where we had it slated in our pay plan. We asked the consultant, um, several times to go and, and double check that information and make sure they're looking at the job descriptions. So because of that, um, they've gone and, and done their due diligence. And so we're working on cleaning up the information. We need to meet with department heads to make sure we're not missing anything. And then probably within a month, um, be bringing the results to city council. Um, many of the positions appeared Many of the positions appear to be falling within the ranges that they currently are in. There are going to probably be some adjustments, and we need to finalize what those numbers might look like as well because that's obviously where council's role would be focused on is if there's any financial implications. So I would say a month to a month and a half.
Thank you. I would like that process expedited as much as we can for obvious reasons. And it's unfortunate that this had to be popped to the forefront, but since the position is open and there was a difference, I see the need to move that forward quickly so we can get a quality person in that position. So thank you for that, but it kind of was an unfortunate circumstance. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
And Heather, I would like to add to this, too. I know you and I talked about the new position, and even though the pay increase is apparent, but there are new job duties and requirements, also additional job duties and requirements for this position now, too, as well, that's going to bring more benefit to the city if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct?
Yes, I actually think, beginning with the previous city manager, they were working on what does this full-time position resemble? Obviously, there's definite administrative secretarial duties that are there, but could that position be used for even something more beyond that? I think initially, their thought was maybe some HR functions. With my background in HR and the confidentiality requirements that the information has, that that office would touch and all of that, I wasn't necessarily comfortable with splitting out those duties. However, there is a definite need in the city to have more of a role in public information, legislative, and grant activities. And with this position being centrally located, we would still rely on our department heads, but this position could also help in those areas as well. And it's those functions require someone to be able to research, to be able to write, to be able to see a bigger picture than what you would sometimes see in that position as well.
That's right. And when you're looking for a person with those type of skills, especially any...
...who requires a different level of education, which I believe this additional income will attract a person with those skills.
I'm very hopeful that we'll get some good applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Our sound system seems to be cutting in and out, so you might want to watch the light as you're talking.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, Heather. What were the three additions to this position? Grant writing, legislative process, and HR?
Public information.
Oh, public information.
Public information.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Diego?
One comment, Mayor. I think it's so important that we treat our employees fair and make sure that they're getting the right pay. And it's been a while since we visited the ranges and, I mean, the pays and stuff like that. So if we could do that as soon as we can, it'd be great, you know? But to treat them as fair as possible for the hard work that they do out there.
And this is just basically a housekeeping measure, for the most part. I think it's a work in progress. It has to happen. And in my estimation, it's the foyer that's being looked at right now, which is great. I totally agree with counsel. We have to be fair to our employees and make sure that they're not underpaid. And so this is an excellent opportunity for us to at least delve into part of it and move forward with that. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no other questions, I am going to make a motion that we approve ordinance 5-2015.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number 5-2015. Is there any further discussion? See none? Let me see if I can get this thing to work here. Hold on one second. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is motion authorizing the city manager to sign the SLV COG mini-grant contract. Heather?
This stems from a simple email that crossed my desk from Ronnie Wisdom, indicating that they have opened the grant program. The SLV COG, I think, filters money through the state down into the valley in order to accomplish some economic development and community projects. And the grant seems to be, if the projects qualify, they try to treat it as a first-come, first-served basis. Obviously, as a local government in the valley, the application we submitted was to help in the assistance of our glass crusher. And hopefully, those funds could also either go towards the glass crusher or the shelter for the glass crusher, depending on how other grants came in. So we were excited to receive the $5,000. We also placed a placeholder that if there's any funds left over, that maybe we could receive up to an additional $5,000 more. So it's not guaranteed. It just depends on if there's funds left over.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to Heather and Pat for getting on this glass crusher, and this $5,000 is going to be huge in that endeavor. And I'm really glad that the city is taking steps forward in recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a comment on that. Commissioner Dunn is here, you know? I can't see why we can't share some of our crushed glass with you. Anyway, what is council's directive?
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I would like to make a motion authorizing the city manager to sign the SLV COG mini-grant contract with the SLV Council of Governments in the amount of $5,000.
Second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? See none? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to ordinance 2015-06, authorizing the issuance of special assessment bonds. I believe this is for the CIP. Over...
For the SID, yes.
SID.
The Special Improvement District at Carroll subdivision number two. So I have put up on the screen our latest moving target, thinking with respect to what the dates moving forward on this process look like, just to anchor the background of where we are in this discussion. As you will recall, there have been a number of steps in this process that have already been taken, beginning with the intent to form the Special Improvement District, the actual formation of the Special Improvement District, the election voted on by qualified electors of that district for whether or not to issue a bond, the ordinance that approved the construction of the improvements contemplated for the district. And now we are at the point of doing, or you're considering on first reading, an ordinance that will accomplish the issuance of those bonds, called the bond ordinance. So just briefly, the outline of our timeline here is that we're slated, also, you'll see on, you already approved in your consent agenda, construction bids for the bulk of that construction. And those are, that first step in construction is slated to start next week. Then ideally, the bond ordinance would be passed, and the bonds would close on June 1st. We're shooting for end of July construction completion, but as you know, that's completely unpredictable. And depending on when construction is completed, some of these other deadlines, timelines trigger in after construction is complete. The costs will be known and will be paid out of the bond proceeds. And then, pretty much, the final step that council will take is to consider and pass an assessment ordinance, which will apportion the appropriate amount of the total cost to each of the lots benefited. And then the process goes forward with lot owners then paying those assessments. And they can elect to do that right after the assessment ordinance. They can pay their assessment in full within 30 days of that ordinance, or they can end up paying the assessments as they come due on annual installments, and it's planned out for a 15-year bond. So that's where we sit with respect to the timing of things.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel, this is a first reading on ordinance number 2015-06. Is there any disc...
If you'd like, we could chunk through that ordinance, just so you know some of the features of it quickly. You've seen it, but I don't know how many people have read it through word by word. I did, and it was a very painful experience. Very glad that I'm not bond counsel, but we can hit the highlights pretty quickly.
I think counsel would appreciate that, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead. So it's up on the screen, and let's just scroll through. We don't need to pay any attention to the whereas's or the definitions. Although, I will comment in the definition, the, one of the things the ordinance does is it assigns the task of sending out assessment notices and collecting assessment notices and dealing with delinquent payments, if they occur, to the finance director. The statute is set up with that responsibility lying in what the statute calls the municipal treasurer. We don't have a municipal treasurer. We have a finance director pursuant to charter. So the ordinance defines the city treasurer to be the municipal treasurer as and designates the finance director to fulfill that role. Then the section three of the ordinance defines that the bond shall be issued in the aggregate principal amount of $650,000 for the purpose of paying the project costs. And the project costs are defined, as we have discussed all along, with respect to the improvements that you've already approved for the subdivision. The maturity date is June 1, 2030. It's a 15-year bond. And the bond interest rate, we have confirmed from the bank now, will be 4.75%, which is lower than some of the early assumptions we were running on when we started running figures. So that's good. The, let's see, we'll scroll on down. The bond can be redeemed prior to maturity in whole or in part, and some of that is what I just mentioned with respect to any lot owner who wants to pay their assessment off without incurring interest by doing it within 30 days of the assessment roll. Also, should there be any funds remaining out of the bond proceeds after all construction costs have been paid, those will go to retire that bond as well. So if the entire bond issue is not needed for construction costs, we won't be paying interest on that money. It'll get paid back right away. There is a, there are three accounts that are set up by this ordinance. One is called the project account, which is where funds for paying for the construction of the project will come from. Another is the reserve account, which will be funded out of the bond proceeds, and that will be used as a backstop for ensuring, or attempting to ensure anyway, that the bond does not go into default if there's a timeliness problem with any payments of any of the installments from the lot owners. And then finally, there is a capital, capitalized interest account, which will be used to ensure that interest can be paid between the time of issuance of the bond in May of this year and the time the first assessments are collected in June of 2016, is when that's slated to happen. There is a provision that the city will perform an audit as part of its annual audit that will include this bond so that we can assure the bondholder that everything is proceeding consistently with the terms of the bond. The bond will be exempt from taxation. So remedies on event of default, the bond, owner of the bond, may require the council to, or the city, to act as if it were the trustee of these monies for purposes of ensuring that they get paid. That essentially means this is not a general obligation bond of the city. This bond is secured only by the revenues to be generated by the assessments to be levied on the special improvement property. So there is no city guarantee of payment of the bond. However, should the bond go into default, the issue will come up in front of you, as council members, I'm sure, about whether you're going to do something about that. And that's one of the things to bear in mind with respect to issuance of this bond.
I think the, how that could happen is if you have several properties go into default, and then we would not have enough funds to, in order to make that payment. So then the question before council would be, do you let that go into default? Or do we use funds from other portions of the city? The other part that, the reason we know this could come before you as a decision point is it is a local bank that is financing this. So that is potentially a question that could come forward. We don't obviously anticipate that that would happen, and they're trying to put in the safeguards to have the funds there should there be some timely issues. But as you know, with attorneys, we plan for the worst-case scenario, and so that's, that clause is in there.
Eric, I've got a question specific to property default. If a property owner or two defaults, what options does the city have as far as, can they acquire the property or...
As soon as there is a default, the city treasurer, i.e. the finance director under this ordinance, will certify the total amount of the assessment on that lot that has defaulted to the county treasurer for collection as the same way that a tax lien is collected. So it's an assessment lien that'll get certified to the treasurer, sold for the amount of that lien, and the city will obtain the monies from the sale to apply. So that process takes time. That's one of the reasons for the reserve account, is to be able to make those payments, if there are any delinquent payments, while this foreclosure on the assessment lien process takes place.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments from, or in regards to the bond issuance? And that would be... That would be ordinance 2015-06. Counselor Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, this looks like a one step in a long process that we still have to go through for this SID. With that being said, if there's no questions, I will move that council pass ordinance 2015-06 on first reading and set the matter for a public hearing on May 20th, 2015, at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on ordinance number 2015-06? See none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Diego?
I'll go ahead and start. I have an airport board committee report, as Commissioner Dunn pointed out. We had a meeting with the three county commissioners and updated them on what the airport, how the airport was going, and the good parts, and like she mentioned earlier, some of the bad parts. Right now, they moved in, and they went through a checklist. We went ahead and they did pave it, so we could have gotten occupancy in there. So that's been paved. And as Commissioner Dunn says, some of the grants, it's, they're kind of slow in getting here. So they were gracious enough to allow us the amount of, I think, 450... So they were gracious enough to allow us the amount of, I think, $450,000 to pay our contractor, so nobody would start throwing liens, and so they could pay their subcontractors. And they were able to, to get that money, and like she says, that we will repay that back once we get that funding from the, from the, from the grants. And what else did, that's pretty much it. But I also bring the, the minutes every time for each of these meetings, and I usually put it in the reading file. So if you really want to get some further actions and stuff, the finances and all that, they're all in this reading file, and you're, you know, it's down there in the mailbox, and you're welcome to read that. That's all I got, Mayor.
Charlie, I have a question for you.
Sure.
When will they start demolition on the old terminal?
That's something too, that they're working on. There was some comments made that maybe that they could save that building, but it's so far gone, some of the problems. So they're putting a timeline, it's, it should be coming pretty soon. They're trying to find, and once again, it's going to be the county doing the demolition on this, on that building and that, so. And it's, it's, also, it was more of a security issue too, but as far as keeping it erected and, and using it for something else. But yeah, it's, that's something that, it, it will come down pretty, pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a report, committee report from the San Luis Valley Economic Development Resource Group, so Development Resource Group, I'm sorry. But I just passed out to you all the statistical profile that was created by Hugh Halleck over at SLVDRG. And this information is very helpful for us, not only as council members, but also for the county and other participants throughout the San Luis Valley. And the good thing about this is, is for anyone who's interested in maybe pursuing grant opportunities here in the San Luis Valley, or businesses that are looking at coming to the San Luis Valley and opening, opening up shop, all of this information is very helpful. So this is just one of the services that the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group provides. I also have some other notes here that they gave me some talking points on, that they're working on. The San Luis Valley Development Resource Group has been working tentatively, and they receive a tentative approval from the USDA for matching funds for the broadband strategic plan. This will allow an inventory of the current broadband that exists in the San Luis Valley, and help identify any additional broadband needs in the San Luis Valley. They also are moving forward with the water study. And right now, the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group is taking input from all participant, participating agencies to see what questions that they would like to have the study answer and address. And that's not just for the city of Alamosa, the county of Alamosa, but it's for the San Luis Valley as a whole. The Community Action Group, which is a part of the San Luis Valley Development Resource has received funded, funding from, the funding for the South Central Seniors to the tune of $50,000 for their Meals on Wheels program. And this program helps the seniors in the San Luis Valley. Once again, this is a service that's provided to help seniors in the San Luis Valley, and not specifically Alamosa County or the city of Alamosa. And also, last week, the UAS Corporation from Spain was in town, and they met with folks at the Alamosa Airport, and they really liked what they saw. And they're looking at manufacturing and testing UAVs in Alamosa. So that's just a brief update with the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Obviously, our audio is out again. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the school board meeting on Monday, and this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So they're doing a lot of different things for all those teachers at the three buildings. They're also doing kind of the end of, end of the year stuff. Some teachers are retiring, new hires, that type of stuff. So we'll be knowing where people are, what people, where people are going. They're looking, they're coming to an end, they're finishing up with testing, and they have a thing called the DAC, which stands for the District Accountability Committee. And what this is, is a group of parents, administrators, and teachers who come together and, and just talk about, and, and try to set direction for the, the district as a whole. And they're looking for parents for the next, for the upcoming year. Okay? Also, I'm the liaison between Adam State as well, and I'm pleased to, to report that their tax services during the month of March and April, they got their final statistics in, and they were, they prepared 758 tax returns. They had, they had total refunds of $1.179 million, just at Adam State. And, and as Mr. Alfred Petroz reported to us a few months ago, they had an office at Trinidad State, as well as one in La Jara. So that's just phenomenal. And they had 1,242 volunteer hours, again, just at Adam State. So I'd like to thank them for their services to our community, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is on. I don't know if anybody can hear me. Okay, good. Counselor Stefano.
Well, I just wanted to thank the staff for all the information that you provided us on our retreat. It was great. I just want to thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Do we have any other committee reports? Seeing none, we will move on to staff announcements. Heather.
An update on the senior center. We had the mayor sign the reverter last week, so that is closed out. I've heard that they may have also received some donations that hopefully, if that, if that is accurate, they will be much more secure financially should there be any capital needs. So that was very good news, and, and hopefully we'll get some more information related to that. We do have some meetings coming up next week, as a reminder on your schedule. On Monday, the Nursing Home Week proclamation presentations will be at Evergreen Nursing Home and San Luis Care Center. We also have a closed session Monday night in regards to our water needs, and to direct some negotiations related to those. And then lastly, next week, we have on Wednesday, the Peace Officer Memorial that we covered earlier in the evening, and looking forward to that. The meeting for the unmanned aircraft was, in my opinion, I think, a very positive meeting. And it's, it's very nice to see that they are still at the same level of interest that they've started at, if not higher. In the room, we had representatives from Trinidad State Junior College and Adam State. We also had the other valley airports in the room. I think that's another unique aspect for this project, is that it can help the entire valley, and there's, there's a need there. And, and to be able to incorporate the other airports and counties, I think, is, is very good. I also want to compliment our partners of the educational institutions, that they seem very much at the table, very interested and, and engaged in these discussions to try to make this successful and make this positive. And so it's very exciting to see. Obviously, the airport board had been working with them and providing them information. From a city perspective, we also gave them aerials and information of land that's within the city, city-owned, those types of things as well, to make sure that they have a good inventory when they're looking around. And one of the items that, that was mentioned is, you know, if this happens, they want to be able to have a facility that they can bring representatives from other countries and across the United States to. So this is a big deal, and there could be some spinoffs. And so thankful that the county is, is being aggressive with this and, and bringing the different people to the table to have these discussions, and we plan to keep our fingers crossed. I think a lot of the decisions need to start happening at the state level, if the FAA and, other, their input into the national FAA, and, and some of those. So hopefully, the, that ball will keep moving, and, and we can start to see some, some movement forward. And lastly, I will be at a conference this Friday and Saturday. It's the Colorado Cooperation Conference. This is one where Randy and I, I think accidentally got invited last time, but it turns out to be a very actually informative conference. And some of the items they will be discussing is some statewide issues related to Tabor, people's ability to get initiatives on the ballot at the state level, and the impact that can have, the budgeting issues at the state level, and how that could trickle down to the communities and educational institutions and, and those things. So I think across the state, there is a, a growing concern with how the state budget is structured, and the requirements that are built into that, to where if there needs to be cuts, where those cuts are going to have to be made. And so it will be good to be a part of those discussions and, and see what else is going on in regards to that. And I don't think there's any other staff updates at this point in time.
Thank you, Heather. Next up, we have Consent Calendar B under the Local Liquor Licensing Authority action. There we have three, three or four items. San Luis Valley Brewing Company Temporary Modification of Premises, Rails and Ales Block Party, June 19th through 20th, Rodeo Dance and Street Party, June 26th through 27, and the Alamo Search and Rescue Block Party, SUDS for SAR, August 22nd through the 23rd. Are there any questions or comments on Consent Calendar B? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar B? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is council comment. Does anyone have a council comment? Counselor Diego.
I guess I'll start. I too would like to make some comments on this past weekend, our two-day retreat that we had. I, I think it was so much information that was provided by staff, and I want to thank staff for the information to kind of give us some kind of guidance of, of how we want to move this city forward. And I've always said that these retreats are so important, because you, you get to sit down and really look at the clear picture and where we're going. And I wanted, like I said, thank Heather and her staff for putting this thing together, and it was, it was truly a true, successful retreat.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo what Charlie said, the, the retreat was very informative to me. I learned quite a bit, starting to wrap myself around the CIP program we're doing. Understand that way better after the retreat. I thank you, Pat. Good information, and just dragging us along, something that you've already filtered through your, you know, all of your stuff. And just be patient with us and keep teaching us how that works. I do appreciate that. I feel like I learned a whole lot. The setting was terrific, the, the facilities were great. I really liked that place. The food was tremendous. The site selection was great. I, I thank staff and everyone for that too, because it, it was a terrific retreat. Thanks for the information. Heinz, you had good input, Chief, everyone, we got really good information, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman.
I too would like to thank the staff for a great retreat this weekend, and the site location. I'm glad that we were able to have this event in the San Luis Valley. That means a lot. I also would like to thank the council members for allowing us to share and voice our differences, and, and also share our thoughts and ideas, and find ways to find common ground in differences. And I think that's very good and healthy for the city, when you have at least seven different personalities, and then you have staff, and then you have all of us find ways to communicate to where we can all get on the same page. I think that is very important as far as moving forward. I also would like to recognize Councilman Rusty Johnson for being inducted into the Rasslin' Hall of Fame this upcoming weekend, and I think that's an honor and a privilege. And I just want to let you know that I feel honored sitting up here next to someone who's going to be in the Hall of Fame, and looking forward to seeing you receive that great honor this weekend. All right, you're welcome.
Counselor Gillespie.
I'll just add that we're all proud of Rusty, and proud of the work he's done on council and for the, the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I'd like to make a statement. I, I know sometimes we don't meet regularly with our community partners, and I think council is probably on the verge of trying to schedule meetings with county commissioners or Board of Education, all sorts of, even our own planning commission, things like that. The more we are in touch, the more we can communicate with one another, the easier it is to get things done and to understand each other. And so with that, I think we have a new energy when it comes to that. So let's keep the lines of communication open with all our partners, and see what they have to say as we go in and end up 2015, or at least get halfway through it. That's my comment. Seeing no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.